Have a motion in the closed meeting be closed and the board certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which the certification applies and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Salute.
Have a motion second. Ms. Shutterworth, would you please certify?
Mr. Borey?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Appreciate y'all coming out tonight. In just a second, we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. During a moment of silence, I would like for everyone to please remember the passing of, recent passing of three of our students, Heather Ann Tucker, John Luke Galini, Galenia, and Kayshawn Green, if you would please. So if everyone please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and clear of sin and justice for all. Please ma'am.
Members of the board, as I, as I understand it, this is not the first year that this has happened. I think it's the second time that our September seniors of the month are also our student liaisons. I understand that's coincidental, but I don't think it will be any surprise to you that these two fine young individuals have been recognized by their home schools as the September seniors of the month. So I'm gonna begin with our Bluestone High School senior of the month, and that is Ms. Macy Scott Mills. Macy is Bluestone's September senior of the month. She is the daughter of Mike and Christie Mills of Chase City, Virginia. She is a well-mannered young lady who constantly strives to reach her fullest potential in everything that she does. She is Bluestone High School student liaison for our school board. Macy is a member of the FBLA, Distributive Education Clubs of America, Relay for Life, FFA, Beta Club, and the outside of the Blue and Gold Club at Bluestone High School. When Macy is not studying or participating in all of these activities and clubs, you will find her on the golf course. Macy is co-captain of the Barron Golf Club and has been the medalist for six matches thus far this season. Outside of school, she is the VSGA Piedmont Section Champion. She is the ladies' club champion for the Mecklenburg County Club for the summer of 2014. One of Macy's favorite teachers, her political science teacher, Mrs. Catherine Jackson, is quoted as having said about Macy, "This is my third year teaching Macy. Each year I am amazed with her accomplishments and her ability to be such a successful student, as well as her success as a key member of the golf team at Bluestone High School." Other than playing golf, Macy is also a docent for the McCallum Moore Museum and Gardens in Chase City. She also attends the First Baptist Church in Chase City. Collectively, her administration reports that her time is very, very well spent, as you can tell. Macy can be congratulated. She's already been accepted to Longwood University, but she has yet to commit. She's continuing to evaluate her options and looking at other colleges and universities in hopes to play golf at the next level. Her favorite subject is history, and she plans to major in history and pre-law. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the September senior of the month for Bluestone High School, Ms. Macy Mills. Charles, or Chris Wilson, as we know him, is the son of Charles and Jennifer Wilson of Baskerville. Chris's academic, extracurricular, and community achievements make him a distinguished recipient of the Senior of the Month Award for Parkview High School for September. Chris worships at Concord Baptist Church in Chase City. He is involved with the Parkview High School FBLA Club, the Forensics Team, and the Drama Club. Chris has competed as a member of the golf team as well. He is the student liaison to the school board, as you know, and he currently serves as president of the Student Government Association at Parkview High School. Chris said that he enjoys his leadership role in the SGA because, and I quote him, "It will make me a better leader in the future and the hard work continues to keep me focused." Chris has worked hard to maintain his grades throughout his high school years, and he plans to continue this when he attends VMI next fall. Chris will major in political science and pursue a career in politics after completing his college education. His most important career goal is, and I quote, "To have as large a role as possible in making people's lives better." That's a tremendous, tremendous aspiration. And I can say personally, Dr. Thornton and I got the opportunity, and I'm not gonna steal your thunder, but to meet with him and some other students at Parkview High School today, and I certainly witnessed that leadership potential and opportunity to serve others through his, through his work. So congratulations to Chris Wilson, Parkview High School's September Senior of the Month. Members of the board, Dr. Thornton asked me to share with you a new aspect of our agenda starting this year. We have decided to look a little bit differently at how we highlight special events and presentations from our schools. So each month, we're going to spotlight one school, and they're going to share with you something that's going on in their school that they're very, very proud of and that they would like you to know about. So the brave school that took the September, the first opportunity was Bluestone High School. So it's my pleasure to introduce Bluestone High School.
Okay, before they come up there, we have a short video that Ron is gonna share, the ice bucket challenge.
We are the school board office, the gutsy, proud school board office that has accepted the ice bucket challenge from Parkview High School. We have raised over $245 in support of a local company, Special Olympics, we're going to support a local company, Special Olympics, and our students who participate. And I'm gonna keep talking, so he can delay me enough. We are challenging the school board and our local Board of Supervisors to challenge and support a local organization like Special Olympics. If they have to say. Oh, they have 36 hours.
We just wanna be made it clear, if you couldn't hear the video, that we challenge the school board and the Board of Supervisors.
So, so we're gonna set a date before this meeting's over with, I guess.
How are y'all? Hope you're doing well tonight. This year, my students and I have the opportunity to do an experience that Bluestone High School students have never done before. It's called the Model General Assembly, and students from across the state of Virginia work together, and they come up with bill ideas. And our students are here tonight to tell you about two of those ideas that we will be working on. Preliminary to our research that we have begun, last week, we had Lawrence gone, who is running against Robert Hurd in our district to come out, and he actually met with our government and political science classes to inform us of the actual bill process and what these students will be learning. Several of my students has graciously volunteered to come tonight to let you know what they will be doing and why it is important to them. I have, I would ask them to please stand to be recognized. And we have a few that will speak to you and tell us, tell you about our bill ideas. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kelsey Thornton, and for our first bill, we will research the topic of operating a personal watercraft or jet ski. Currently, you have to be 14 to drive one of these vehicles. Jet skis are a major concern because in 2012, personal watercraft resulted in 19% of boating accidents, causing 770 deaths. Our plan is to raise the age from 14 to 16, since you'll be more responsible when you're 16 because you've operated a motor vehicle on the roads, so you'll be able to operate a water vehicle on the water.
Hi, my name is Antoine Tucker, and I'll be talking about the second bill, which is lowering taxes in Southern Virginia. And in our rural area, we think taxes should be lower because, or either focus more on us instead of the industrialized areas in Northern Virginia. And on October 30th, we will be attending a student workshop, which will help in the writing process, and our bills must be submitted by December 1st.
Hi, I'm Kristi Coleman, and I'm giving you the positive and negative effects of the bill. Lowering the positive and negative effects of our bill prepares to answer questions presented by others and will strengthen our arguments. We have conducted research that proved that the Southern Virginia's taxes have gone to support Northern Virginia taxes, and we would like to change it.
Hello, my name is Josh Rawson, and when lobbying for a particular issue, it's important to know more than just the facts. If you can relate to the people and connect your issue to real-world problems, then you can get your idea across better. In this program, we will be working with students from different high schools across the state of Virginia, and it's important for us to get this opportunity because we will get to learn how the bill process works in Virginia, and this will affect our everyday lives growing up.
Good evening. My name is Macy Mills. This program will give us many opportunities. We can actually collaborate ideas with other students at the workshops, which will prepare us for the MGA in April. The actual assembly will take place April 16th through the 18th of 2015.
Hi, my name's Matt O'Rourke, and during the MGA in April, we will propose two bills, and the bill process includes actually introducing the bill, and after the introduction, it will be referred to the proper committee it falls under, and at this point, changes can be made. And if it is approved by the House of Delegates, then it'll be sent to the Senate, and if it is passed in bold, it'll be sent to the youth governor, and the youth governor can pass the bill or suggest changes to it. And at MGA, we will also have the opportunity to meet the governor and legislators at the Governor's Ball. This is also a pilot program, and if it's successful, then it'll be offered at Parkview next year.
We're gonna take a quick break to, to recognize or meet the people who just spoke to us a real second. If y'all'd all come back to the front. We don't have as many recognitions as we normally do, but we're gonna meet everyone just the same. All right, Ms. Tucker, we're gonna move on to your performance contracting information you have for us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Thornton, school liaisons. I'm Heather Tuck, and I'm here representing Johnson Controls, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Jim Blevins and Whit Blake with Johnson Controls, and they're gonna talk to you about performance contracting.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm gonna make this fairly short. Most of it's been in your packet, and you've had an opportunity to look at it, so I'm not gonna sit here and read through everything. The code section of Virginia gives you the authority to enter into performance contract. Basically, in performance contracting, it's to kinda help you, help you go in and fix your buildings up using your energy dollars, and by doing so, that will help, it keeps your budget neutral. So I want you to think about, and if we can go to about, on the slide, it'll be the next one. Next one after that. Says performance contracted and funded. All right. I want you to think. Jimmy, you wanna turn the lights on? And just for the press, I'm gonna have a handout, but I don't have any for y'all tonight. I want you to think about this being your overall, your overall, okay? And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna each school, that's all right. So each, that reference is a UCL. So each school has a UCL bill. Each one of you look there, and you have, you should have $10, ten ones if I counted right. And so in your savings, if you do nothing, you're just gonna continue to pay that money to the electric company. So you're getting, you're getting no benefit from that. You're just paying that to the electric company, and you're continuing to use that. Or you can, now, count out three, $3. Can I hold that up so I can see your $3? You can take $3, which is a conservative estimate of what you're gonna save on your electric bill. If we go, if go in and do an energy audit and find ways to improve your energy savings, you could go in, do windows, you could do many things to your buildings that need to be done, new AC units, you can even use some of it to put sidewalks in, whatever. So those $3 would go for projects. Now, you would look at all the, so each school would have an opportunity to do some projects with their money. Now, nothing up my sleeve, this is no, this is real money, it's not fake money, that's why I didn't bring Monopoly money or anything else. This is real money. You're spending it no matter what you do. No matter what's going on, that money is still going to the electric company. You take those $3, and not only will an escrow or a company who you choose to do this with, they will guarantee that their savings are going to be there. So as you're spending that $3, and all of a sudden, the savings not there, what happens? You say, okay, I gotta come up with $3, right? That's not the case, way this program works. In that case, Mr. Blake here has to come up with $3 to give each one of you all to keep you whole. So the whole concept is fairly simple, so that you understand that, under this, under the law and the way this works, it entitles you, and the state of Virginia is encouraging you to go in, look at your building, become energy efficient, and they've written the law and such that will allow you to keep your budget neutral, and at the same time, work on your infrastructure for the schools. And the companies, they have fixed these escrows across the state of Virginia to come in and help you. They'll do an energy audit, just much like how your students did an energy audit. Then they will meet with you all, go over it with you of what they see the audit, how much your savings are, and then they will guarantee those savings, and therefore, you can do, do the, do the improvements to your building with a guarantee, and so it's really a no-risk opportunity for you. That's very, that's how it works. It's not any more complicated than what I just showed you. Questions?
So basically, you're gonna, we contract with this company. They come in and assess everything in the building.
Right.
They show us, these are the things that you need to, to change to become more energy efficient.
Right.
They actually front that.
Right.
They pay for that upfront.
Right.
And then we pay back through the savings.
Right.
So it's no money out of pocket to begin with.
No. Totally revenue neutral. Just, just the way I just gave you the money.
Right.
If we have a company now that we're paying to make us more energy efficient, are we gonna substitute this company or this other company? We're not gonna pay them. They're gonna come in and do it, and the money that we save is basically how they're gonna pay. But we're paying, this other man, Rod Rans, they turned the lights on.
I can talk to that. The company we currently pay, we're in the last year of that contract, and that is changing behaviors and, and monitoring it through their program. And so that goes on after this year. We have that, we have that program at no cost in the future. So that's a behavior. This is actually going in and changing mechanical systems and possibly windows and making them more energy efficient, and those savings can then be utilized for other things within the, to pay for those upgrades and for other things within the building. Is that...
That's, so I mean, I mean, I know people can come up here and talk a lot, but I wanted to bring it to you in the most simplest form of how this whole program works under the state guidelines.
And one reason we're looking into this, some of the projects that are on our list that we've shared with the Board of Supervisors are, they funded the project at South Hill the Compressor, and they funded two of the boilers, and we have other issues throughout our system. The elementary schools, we still have infrastructure issues in the places that we're not in the addition. We still need new windows there, we still need new HVAC units for the long term. So those are things that we need to look at, and if we keep spending the money that we're saving for capital funds for the new high school, we're never gonna get the new high school. So we're looking at this as a possible vehicle to save money through energy and pay for those upgrades at the elementary school.
This whole program doesn't take away from your maintenance budget. Go ahead.
What are some of the schools that you're working with? I know when we were in the group at the VSPA conference, Southampton was there as well.
Southampton was there. Whit just got back from Page.
Yeah, we just, we just did a workshop today. We're in the, we're in the middle of developing a project with Page County Schools, Buchanan County Public Schools, where we've been installing there. So there's some most more recent ones.
Washington County, on Monday, we'll have a meeting there. The prison system is already doing this. State police is, is looking into this. VDOT has a, has an opportunity onboard. Newport News, we've, we've been there.
There's over 54 school divisions that have done this or in the process of doing this right now.
Everybody that's trying to get in the program are a lot like you. They have, and they're newer schools too. I mean Newport News, in Chesterfield County, I mean, a lot of these are looking at this as, as budgets become tighter. And again, this is one of the things that the governor and everybody's been pushing, is to get this program out here. And so the state has really pushed this as a way. And electric companies wanna do this. One of the questions we, that we also got, and I'll let Whit talk about that, the, your electric companies want us to take, to do this because there is so much stress on the grids now, that any saving that we can actually do is, is, is very beneficial to them.
That's right. Yeah, well, they, they encourage capacity reduction because, like you said, the grids are stretched so much, so, you know, your division, every, collectively, it takes a lot of demand off the grid, which is in need of a lot of extra generation. So it's, it's supported by not only the Commonwealth of Virginia, but the whole PJM grid system, you know, throughout the entire East Coast.
Can, can you describe the oversight provided by, is it the Department of Minerals and...
Management of Minerals.
Right.
Department of Management of Minerals is the oversight agency on this project, on this. And, and so they're, they, they make sure that, that what we're doing is correct. And each year, Whit and them have to verify what, that they are actually saving the money, and that there is a savings. And if there's not a savings, again, if, they have to make sure, this has to be totally revenue neutral. They, and they cannot, and what we're really beginning to find out is, is divisions are saving a little bit more money than, than what they're saying. They're very conservative because they've gotta guarantee it. So, so, so they're gonna not, you know, make the, make it look bigger than it really is, because at the end of the day, if they say that you're gonna save $3 million over 15 years, you, they've gotta deliver that you've saved $3 million. And if they don't, they've gotta write you a check for that, for that. And the other thing about this is, under the Code of Virginia, your budget is approved on an annual basis. So what happens if we buy all this stuff and then we don't get, our budget goes down or we have to make some sort of cut? It's yours. I mean, this is a real, I mean, we got that ass, and the reason I'm saying that, we got that ass by the people from Grundy. They actually had the lawyers and everybody else involved, and they, that, that was correct. And so there are no, no gimmicks, no anything. It's, it's this, this way. So regardless of what you decide to do or not do, that $10 that I just gave you tonight, is, you're gonna, you're gonna give that to the electric company. This program is saying to you, we think you can, we can, you can save 30% of your energy costs by doing these things, and you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it through, through that, through that method. There's no, no gimmicks, and if they do not deliver, then they've gotta give, give you It would be, they could actually get the contract, your actually contract is usually a 15-year contract, but, I mean, they're gonna install everything within probably a year, 18 months, but then you've got your warranty period and all of that, that they've gotta verify that it all, that it's all working.
Yeah, that, really, the term is flexible, you know, the district has a lot of say in how they long, but typical, it's 15 years. Because what we're doing is, we're taking really new infrastructure. It's not behavioral, it is new infrastructure. So, you know, new mechanical systems, maybe lighting systems, new windows, and all that savings then is put into a bucket, and with that, you would buy these, these infrastructure improvements, as well as other things that, that can fit in the project that can be funded. And usually, within a 15-year term, we don't go past that because a lot of the systems become obsolete if it's that too far down the road, the typical 15 years.
So just to make sure, at the end of the 15 years, if you haven't saved us enough to be able to pay for that, then you, you take that...
Well, take it a step further. Every year, we have to show that we've saved that. That savings is guaranteed by, you know, Johnson Controls. It also has to be bonded in accordance with the Code of Virginia. So there's a separate bond that also rides on top of that, in case something were to happen to our company. So, but yeah, after the 15 years, so if we go back to this pie chart here, after the, after the, these are permanent reductions in energy cost. So when we install a control system, when we install a new high-efficiency... So when we install a control system, when we install a new, uh, high efficiency rooftop unit, it's a permanent reduction in your utility cost. And when that system is paid for, all of that savings is rec, is realized. And there's no, there's no shared savings, there's no split savings. It's all 100% resides within the district.
You want to have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get to keep your $10 or put it towards your ice bucket challenge.
Sure was. Thank you, thank you all for that. Ms. Rogers, I think you have some information for us.
Good evening. Um, it's that annual time again where I brought to you tonight the local plan for the education of the gifted on behalf of the Gifted Advisory Committee from last year. We also last year had Region Seven in Virginia to read through and give us critiques of our local plan. So what you have in front of you or what you have on your board docs is the revision, the revisions for this year. And I've tried to highlight everything that was added or changed. Some of it was just a little bit of wording. We did, however, it was the feeling of the Gifted Advisory Committee to add the testing at the elementary level of the OLSAT at the fourth grade level. We were screening second grade students. They thought that it would be a good idea to add back the OLSAT, so we decided to do that. We did fourth grade instead of fifth grade, which is what we did a few years back. Just because that way, it, once they're screened in fourth grade, they will get to at least enjoy one year of the center program at the elementary school before moving on to the middle school. You'll see that reflected on page seven. On page 20, and I'm just highlighting some of the major changes. It was brought to our attention at the very beginning of last year by the Gifted Advisory Committee that there were some concerns about the middle school program. We surveyed the students, the teachers and the parents at the middle school and got, the response was overwhelming that yes, there are some concerns at the middle school. So on page 20, you will notice that we did put back the gifted language arts class at the middle school. And we want to thank the middle school principals for helping us with that. And then the only other major change or addition was some more information on pages 26 and 27 about the different governor school programs that we have. That is a little confusing. We have an academic year governor school, a summer regional governor school, and then summer residential governor school. So we tried to add some more information just to clarify those three programs. Also shared with you today the survey results. I think Sharon shared those with you that you can look through. But this is all for information tonight and action next month. Are there any questions tonight? Okay.
Are the students at the middle school, in addition, I know math, they may have some different levels of math, are they traveling together for history and science as well?
That is my understanding and the middle school principals are here. We left it in the plan that they would be cluster grouped just in case there were situations where that couldn't be guaranteed. But it is my understanding that they do travel together, yes. I'm getting headshot at, for the rest of the subjects, except like you said, sometimes math can sometimes be a little bit different.
That's not guaranteed in the plan.
It's really up to scheduling. So it's up to the schools whether they continue that.
Okay.
Any other questions tonight?
More questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Hackney? I think I read a few, in that strategic plan.
Yes, sir. Just a moment, Mrs. Rogers and Ms. Mrs. Somerville-Jett. I'm sorry, it's still a little foreign to me. Are, um, going to review with you this past year's official SOL scores both by division and by individual school. We're going to divide it up elementary and secondary. I think you're going to see that in some areas we've, we have tremendous pockets of excellence where our division has shown growth and exceptional improvement. Unfortunately, you're also going to see some focus areas that we need to continue to work hard to improve. We're not yet where we want to be, but we will continue to work diligently to get those scores up. We're pleased with our progress and we're going to continue this upward trend. At the division level, just for your information, we found ourselves almost to the state average in about a third of the, the tested areas. We improved from last year in 20 of the 33 areas tested. We're very proud of that. Um, in Region Eight, looking at sort of how we fared, and on average, um, in those 33 testing areas, we found ourselves generally about averaging right in the middle of those 12 school divisions. Our goal is, is to make gains every year, significant gains every year. We're not satisfied with that, but we're, we're on an upward trend. I do want to emphasize before these, um, our directors of elementary and secondary come up to share the specific scores, um, the consistent message that we're, we've been hearing out of Richmond really for the last three years, but as recently as today in the Richmond Times. State officials have predicted this trend and have anticipated the number of schools whose scores have dropped and who are again missing state accreditation. Charles Pyle, the, um, public relations person for the Department of Education in today's paper, as I, as I said, is quoted as having said, "The drops in scores and accreditation ratings are not a sign that students are suddenly learning less or that our teachers are suddenly doing a, not doing a good job in the classroom." He actually pointed out it's quite the opposite, that actually students are learning more because the tests are more rigorous, the standards are more challenging at each and every grade level. I have no doubt that our students are learning better and that they are learning more. And we're going to get our schools to where they need to be. The last thing that DOE has shared with us is that, and this was reflected in today's paper as well, very timely article, this is not a system that is going to turn on a dime. And whenever we have had significant changes in our SOL or state accreditation system, there's a period of adjustment that typically comprises several years. And again, we've been saying that, um, change takes time and we're on an upward trend and we can, we intend to continue that. I'm proud of all that we've accomplished this past year and I truly am very optimistic about the year ahead of us. Later in the presentation, after Tracy and Christie present the scores, our coordinators are going to share with you in each of their content areas of expertise, some of the action steps, the major action steps that we're planning on taking and already have plans in place to ensure that our scores continue to rise. We are going to get there and we appreciate your understanding and your patience. At this time, Mrs. Rogers is going to go over the elementary school division performance.
I was going to say, yeah, if you could just leave one, one so we can see our notes a little bit. Perfect, perfect. We'll begin, of course, with the elementary level. And what you can see here, we've tried to color code this. Everything in the area of green is where we've either maintained or made gains. The area of yellow indicates that we dropped sometimes within two, three points. And then the pinkish color is where we've dropped more than five points. So those, what we highlight those in pink or red to, um, indicate areas of critical concern or things that we're looking at even more closely. As you can see at the elementary level, we did have some areas of great gain. Grade three math overall went from 39 to 59. Some areas just grew a little bit, grade five math from 56 to 57. Would like to point out that the grade four Virginia studies, that 83 from the previous year, previously we taught Virginia studies in the fifth grade. Last year was the transitional year where we moved it to fourth. So that last year, both fourth and fifth graders took that test. So you have twice the number of students testing. And those fifth grade students had had that content for two years. So we only dropped by three points there, but it was only fourth grade students that were tested this past year. Grade five across the board is an area of concern, as you can see, with the reading dropping and also the science. We've actually looked at the scores across the state and found that, um, over 60 school divisions dropped in grade five reading and over 80 school divisions dropped in grade five science. Not really sure the reason for that yet. There's a DDOT meeting in October, hope to maybe find out some more information, but that seemed to be a trend across the state in those two areas. In terms of the secondary data, um, you can see in grade six, grade seven reading and, and of course, reading at the high school level, um, that we either stayed the same or we made some gains. In grade eight reading, that is an area of concern for us. We did make some drops there and, and a lot of that can be attributed to, at that time, the absence of the curriculum. But our wonderful coordinators and teachers have done a, a great job this past summer creating that. In terms of gains here, we made gains in the areas of world history two, Virginia and US history and grade six math. Grade seven, you'll notice that I didn't color code that because in 2012, 13, we did not test in that area. So this past year, we had a, a score of 39. One of the major things on this sheet that, oh, yes, and we did have growth in algebra one, I don't want to take that away. One of the major areas of concern for us is grade eight math. And again, one of the things we were looking at was the absence of curriculum in addition to our inability to attract, recruit and maintain qualified teachers in that grade level. And that's one of the reasons I want to kind of tie it back to last month. If you remember when I talked about Cortez and, and one of our biggest reasons for, for doing that and having that support there, um, looking at grade eight math was one of those areas where we felt we really needed that Cortez core program to have that oversight and that guidance. And in terms of science, we did make gains in earth science, biology and chemistry. Science eight, we did experience some drops. And as we looked at the data, we did notice that 82 school divisions dropped in grade eight science. So I know our science coordinator is working closely with administrators and teachers to sort of assess the gaps and develop strategies to address that area. Then as we move to look at each school, um, first we have Chase City. So again, you can see, even as a school, um, some areas of gains and again, some areas of concern, the grade five again, um, and the grade four Virginia studies, keeping in mind that last year, that was two, um, groups that tested there. Again, the coordinators will go into more detail, but we have done a lot of work with the curriculum, writing common assessments to help us, um, look at these scores across the year to make sure we're identifying our gaps. But the, this is the area for Chase City that we are concerned with. Let me go back real quick. If you will notice too, one of the things that we have to look at when we look at the data is not always comparing from one year to the next because as you look at the grade five math, the 64 down to 54. But we also try to track the students. And if you go back and look at those same students in grade four, they had a 50 in math. So there is some actual gain for that particular group of students. So sometimes when we're looking at the data, we also want to make sure that we keep in mind that grade five and grade five are two totally different groups of students every year. So we try to follow the students from year to year as well when we look at the data. Here we have Clarksville. Again, some areas of great gains. As you know, math was a focus for all of our schools last year. So a lot of work was done in the math area and we're pleased to say that in most cases, math did increase at the elementary level. And then we have La Crosse. And again, some great gains you'll see in grade three where we had a 21 the previous year and we went up to a 70. So we're really proud of that. Grade four did drop just a little bit, but again, if you look at, um, from year to year, you look at last year's grade four, it had a 67. And then in fifth grade, they dropped down to a 56. So that is still an area that we're looking at, even though from year to year, 50, grade five, 37 to 56, we're very pleased with. When you look at grade four where it was a drop the previous year, those grade three students had a 21 and in grade four, they moved up to a 63. So again, tracking from one year to the next and also looking at the previous year. And last, but not least, is South Hill. And again, some areas of great gains, the grade four math from 60 to 71. Grade five dropped just a little bit. Again, grade five science across the board you're seeing, grade five reading across the board you're seeing. So those are definitely areas that the coordinators are focusing on, um, for this year. And as Ms. Somerville-Majette just stated, um, now that we have a solid curriculum in place, we do expect to see continued growth in these areas. All right, Blue Stone Middle. You can see in reading six and reading seven, we've remained the same or made some gains. The same with, um, US history one, and they made pretty substantial gains, actually US history one and US history two. Reading eight and writing eight are areas of concern, again, with the, um, the new curriculum. And in addition to the I-Ready that we discussed last month, that'll really help us go in and just hone in and, um, be able to identify what those deficit areas are and be able to address them. Blue Stone Middle continued. They made gains in grade six math, algebra one and geometry. Again, math seven wasn't tested. And as I said earlier, with the science eight, that 82 school divisions are in the same predicament. Parkview Middle, um, they made gains in grade eight writing in US history two. Very minimal loss in grade seven reading, grade eight writing, grade eight reading. Um, again, they made gains in grade six math and in algebra one. And they're still holding very strong in geometry. Blue Stone High School, they made gains in English reading, Virginia and US history, world history two, algebra one and algebra two. Again, geometry is one of the areas that we, that we're continuing to struggle with. And I know Ms. Burnett will, will address that when she comes in. And they made gains in earth science and chemistry as well. Parkview High School made gains in English reading, world history two, Virginia, US history. Again, with the geometry, that is an area that, that we are working on to address and we are using Cortez to assist us with that. And also, um, they made gains in earth science and biology as well. Now coordinators will talk about our next steps.
Good evening, Chairman Per Year, members of the boards, school liaisons, Dr. Thornton. Some of the action steps we have started for this year. We are, um, of course, we've, we recognized last meeting, all of the teachers that created with our, um, that participated with our summer curriculum writing for both reading and math. We are the ongoing reflection of the pace and alignment of those curricula that we wrote this summer. We have teacher-created common assessments for both reading and math. And we also have created a district assessment calendar to monitor the student performance on those. Teachers, school and division level administrators will be analyzing that resulting data. And of course, we'll be changing our instruction as we need to. We are going to be using I-Ready to diagnose areas of weakness and to also prescribe interventions. We have implemented Cortez programs in math six through algebra two. We are using the core program for all eighth graders. And we're using the track program for all other grades and pass for semester classes at the high school. We have implementation of ST math at a targeted elementary school. We have implemented administrative guidelines that outline expectations for lesson plans, teacher observations and data analysis at the building and district level. We have extended some high school math classes from semester to year long. And we have specific focused professional development activities with follow-up in our areas of concern.
We are going to continue a concerted effort to recover our math and language arts students through the academic year by using Project Graduation, the grant that was received. The coordinator involvement with new teachers has already begun. We are already in schools every Tuesdays and every Thursdays and most Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, supporting new teachers, their curriculum, their lesson design, their lesson delivery, their assessments. And, uh, we're looking at data to make educational decisions to form and frame our instruction. Third, we're identifying the three to five highest performing districts by content. We have already done that. To contact, to find out what they're doing in their division that we could maybe go see or they can share. Next, we have completely evaluated response to intervention. I have, um, contacted the VDOE and gotten, gotten new information on. and gotten, gotten new information on response to intervention, which is now called the Virginia Tiered Assessment Program. We are going to ensure that all tiers are properly identified, differentiated, and served according to ongoing data collection and analysis. And at this time, I really want to thank the board for iReady. Thank you so much for, for voting to give this awesome tool and to put that in the hands of teachers. It is going to make a tremendous difference in, with our students this year, especially with RTI. We have reorganized the duties of the directors in their roles that include weekly visits to focus on academic review, which includes instructional rounds, data analysis, lesson plan review. And last, in addition of the research-based after-school program for six schools, they will be using lit art and lit mathematics through the funds awarded by the Twenty-First Century Grant.
To give further support to our special education students, we are restructuring to include more collaborative teaching models for special education. And there will be follow-up reviews of those models so that students with disabilities get improved services. District one, we've been working very hard on data analysis. And the district administrative team now meets twice a month and look at data as a part of those meetings. During the summer, we had training for building-level administrators and the entire administrative team in data collection, analysis, and decision-making. The building-level administration now meets weekly with their teams of teachers to look at data at the building level, to make decisions based on that data, and to let those decisions reflect in their lesson plans. Our middle schools have incorporated some creative scheduling this year to allow for more SOL preparation and review during the school day, as well as in the after-school programs. We have redefined the roles of instructional coaches this year. Not only the coordinator's roles have been redefined, but the instructional coaches. And they're going to be working with teacher leaders to facilitate the growth of those leadership roles within the building and leadership capacity there. And as coordinators, we are analyzing the student performance by question, SOL analysis for all of the tested areas in our content areas, because that gives us details of all the particular areas of weakness there.
So members of the board, I hope that that assures you that we have a very, very intentional and strategic plan in place to continue using data to make decisions around what's best for instructional program and student achievement. And we fully anticipate our upward trend to continue as we focus very intensively on those areas of, of concern that you've seen tonight. So we're all prepared to answer any of your questions, if you have any.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you all.
I have a comment.
Yep, sorry, where'd I go?
I have a comment so people can understand the trend and what, and what's happening. Because if you look back, the, the reading and the math scores over the last three years, if you read the newspapers from across the state, the first year, there was about a hundred schools accredited with warning. Last year, there was about four hundred. And this year, it's predicted to be close to six hundred. There's a reason for that is because the state was using a three-year rolling average of scores. So the scores you see this year are pretty true scores of what the students scored this year and this year only. Where in the past, they would roll one year of the old SOLs into that or two years into that. And, and so that's, that's had an effect. So if you're the general public, you're wondering why we're three years in and Virginia seems to be getting further behind. It's because now the only score that, that's shown there in counts is the new SOL. So it's a truer score of what our students are taking now with the new, more rigorous SOLs.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. You don't want to have anything else? Already, Ms. Tuck, I think you got some information for us?
No, I'm still got Dr. Allen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Allen. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Members of the board, in addition to all the work that we're going to be doing and continue to do that we just shared with you a few minutes ago, we are working on a long-term strategic plan for our school division in all areas of organizational leadership, but with a particular focus on reading and mathematics. So for the next two months, we're going to just give you a little bit of information about how, where we're focusing, those efforts in particular in achieving or improving reading achievement. And next month, we'll be looking at ways we're going to be working to improve mathematics achievement over the course of the next five or so years, long-term. So I'm just going to, and Mr. Goodman, I want to go through this fairly quickly. I just wanted, just a reminder that reading is truly the cornerstone of everything. Once our children learn to read, they're forever set free. And we all know this. So we're just going to, I just have a few. Ten ways to become a better reader, read, 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 read. The more that you read, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go. We know there is a direct relationship to that. We, we don't just want to settle for reading achievement and reading scores, as you just, you've just seen. We want our children to love reading and we want them to, to, to learn to read for recreation. So there's no such thing as a child who hates to read. There are only children who have not yet found the right books. So we're going to try and focus on instilling a love of, of reading in our students. There is a direct correlation between a child's ability, which I'm going to show you in some very sad statistics in just a moment, in their ability to read and their ability to lead. So today, a reader, tomorrow, a leader. No one can read with profit that which he cannot learn to read with pleasure. So we're looking for not just compliance in reading, but actual fluency and a love and passion and desire for that wonderful skill in all of our children. More is better. The number of books students read is among the best indicators of student reading development. So we want students reading more. And you're going to see that referenced in a number of initiatives in our strategic plan. Again, focusing on developing a love of reading. We shouldn't teach great books. We should teach a love of reading. I love this one. Reading is dreaming with our eyes open. Reading gives us a place to go when we have to stay where we are. Our kids can do be anything. Keep reading. It's one of the most marvelous adventures that anyone can have. Again, just focusing on not just the skills, but creating a love and passion. Reading where true magic hides. The whole world opened to me when I learned to read. And we want that for all of our children. Now, some unfortunately sad statistics, but those that support a very concerted effort in literacy development and reading in our long-term planning. Over one million children drop out of school each year. Nearly half of adults in our country are functionally illiterate. Sixty percent of America's prison inmates are illiterate. Eighty-five percent of juvenile offenders have reading problems. And more than twenty percent of adults read at or below the fifth grade level in our country. Children who have not developed some basic literacy skills by the time they enter school are three to four times more likely to drop out in later years. Forty-four percent nationally, fourth-grade students cannot read with fluency. Two-thirds of students who cannot read proficiently by the end of the fourth grade are statistically likely to end up dropping out of school, in jail, or unemployed. That's a very, very tragic statistic, but one that certainly supports a literacy-based orientation in our schools. To participate fully in the Twenty-First Century, and you've heard us talk so much about the skills that our kids are going to need to be successful, and it's so different than what our SOLs used to measure. Citizens need powerful literacy abilities that until now have been only achieved by a small percentage, as you could see in some of the, the statistics of our population. The research is very clear that by the end of the third grade or the beginning of the fourth grade, and you'll see it sometimes second and third, but clearly, the third grade is the watershed year. We can predict, and the research, as I said, is very, very clear, that if a child is not reading proficiently by the time they enter the fourth grade, he or she will have approximately a seventy-eight percent chance of not catching up. So if you turn that around, twenty-two percent chance of catching up. And the deficits only get bigger and bigger as they grow older. Twenty-five percent or one in four children grows up not knowing how to read. This is tragic. Approximately one-third of fourth-grade students are at or below the basic level on the NAEP reading assessments. It's a national assessment that's done for fourth graders every, on a regular basis. Okay, so we're, we're going to target and, and again, this is just an introductory sort of preliminary look. We have a lot of work to do as we grow this plan. But we're looking at two very, very broad, long-term goals. We want all of our students in our school division reading on grade level, not later than the third grade. And two, we want all of our students to have access to a very comprehensive literacy instructional program from kindergarten to the twelfth grade, pre-kindergarten to the twelfth grade. And we want to ensure that our goal is that they graduate with the survival skills necessary to compete in the Twenty-First Century. You've heard us reference Tony Wagner's seven survive, or eight survival skills. We are, every one of these skills is literacy-based. Critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, the ability to collaborate in teams with each other, accessing and analyzing information, being creative and innovative. All of these things we want, these are the skills that we've been talking to you about for, and, and that our new SOLs are based upon. We're going to ensure that infused in all of those skills that we are, we are focusing all of our instructional design upon is a strong literacy foundation. And this last slide, I think this is the last slide, are our, I don't know how many, but lots of objectives that we're going to develop as a part of this plan. Things that we're going to do and evolve to that will ensure that we accomplish those two broad goals for our students. Obviously, we're going, our kids need more opportunity to read. So we're going to continue to embed opportunities for increased reading practice at all levels. We're going to continue to differentiate instruction. And as Carla referenced, we're going to maximize our RTI program, identifying kids earlier and making sure we have more meaningful interventions to support their, their growth and to address their gaps in learning. We're going to ensure that all of our staff, all of our staff from pre-K to, to twelfth grade, because literacy is not just something you learn in the primary years, have access to high-quality professional development that embeds literacy into, and reading instruction into the content areas. You've heard a number of references tonight to an aligned curriculum and assessments to the standards. Again, continuing to ensure that reading is, is at the cornerstone and literacy is embedded in all of our, our curriculum. And we basically said that, the next one, amend the curriculum to include scientifically-based literacy. We're going to use what the research says. And we're going to make sure that those are, that's the way we're teaching reading to all of our students, pre-K to twelve. This year, we have looked at moving from a push-in or a pull-out and sometimes push-in model to what the research says is much more bang for our buck and a reading coaching model. So our reading specialists in our, in particular, elementary schools are going to work more with teachers to try and help them develop those strategies to, to support struggling readers as opposed to pulling them out and, and taking them away from the, the instruction that's going on in their regular classrooms. Carla also referenced iReady. We are so excited. And I know that's an expensive tool, but I can promise you, it's money well spent. Our administrators are ecstatic about this. Our teachers are ecstatic about it. iReady is a very adaptable program that is going to allow us to frequently assess our students' needs, in particular, in reading and math. It will help us diagnose their skill deficit areas. And then it will predict and support through frequent, our ability to provide us reports for frequent monitoring and targeted assistance to help fill those gaps of those students. So we're, we're kind of perceiving that sort of as the glue and a wonderful tool to monitor and to support our students, in particular, those that are struggling. Working on the development of high-quality novel studies at all levels and lists of, of novels to support instruction. Have a really exciting initiative that Dr. Thornton's about to roll out this week. He is asking and we're answering enthusiastically. Every employee in the school board office is going to be assigned to at least one and maybe a couple of struggling second-grade students who need support in reading. And again, more practice and opportunities to be read to more. And we're going to go into the schools once a week and, and support our, our teachers and our administrators in, in helping with those students. We are planning activities to do book studies between schools and across schools and celebrate and provide exciting kickoffs and checkups on those, the processes. And actually, Blue Stone Middle School has already done that this summer. And it was a real, real success. They continue to, to work on their reactions to the book Wonder that they did over the summer. Again, ensuring that our curriculum has reading and literacy instruction embedded in all of the content areas, all the way up to twelfth graders. We're going to be looking at individual, implementing individual reading plans for all of our students K eight. Doesn't mean that students at the high school level won't need them and won't get them. But we're going to be really optimistic and think that by the eighth grade, we're going to have, we're, we're going to have them where they need to be. Actually, we want them to have them there at the fourth grade, but not later than the eighth grade for individual planning. We're going to continue to increase our focus on reading instruction and develop partnerships to help us with that. Continue to pace and assess regularly and routinely to benchmark how kids are doing and make sure that on a regular basis, we are providing appropriate interventions to meet those skill deficits. As I, one of our coordinators referenced, we're really excited about the new Twenty-First Century Learning After-School Programs. We're going to just continue the support with a fun, new product with, that focuses on literacy and math skill development. We're going to work, developing programs where we can increase access to books and reading at home, even starting with newborns in our local hospitals and ensuring that all children have access to books and print materials in their homes. And continue to focus on our students who may be performing and are performing on grade level, but to continue very focused enrichment literacy activities so that, again, our goal for not just reading achievement, but passion and a love of that incredible skill is what all of our children deserve and, and will leave us with. So those are just some of the objectives as a part of our strategic plan. This will be grown into much more. But we just wanted to give you an idea of some of the areas in which we're going to be, be working as we, as we grow this plan and our program to support literacy development in all of our children and all of our schools. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to add that the team has worked very hard putting a plan together. And it's, it's not completely done. It's got an ongoing work. I do want to say, for twenty or thirty years, we've all been saying they have to read by the end of second grade or the end of third grade. And we all know this fact. I think what's different about this plan and using tools and data like iReady is this is not a slogan. You can see where, people have said this in the past, they have to read on grade level by the end of third grade. You saw the statistics on the board. We're not doing that as a whole in public education. So this is a true commitment to individualize the plan for those kids through iReady and other data tools to meet the needs. We already started, actually, two years ago, telling elementary principals, do whatever you need to do K through two in your building. And that means if you have to leave science and social studies behind for some students, then that's what you do. They have to have a foundation. They have to know how to read. And they have to know the basics of math. And without reading, they'll, they'll never be able to fully understand and grasp the concepts of science and history. Open that door and let a child read, and you've opened education for them for the rest of their life. So it's a true commitment to that. And, and, and the reason I'm sharing this is when your child gets, gets pulled and all of a sudden, they're not getting some history and science, and you're wondering why, is because we're going to do whatever it takes. And whatever the data shows, your child needs to get you to that point. And at the same point, enriching children as well with the novel studies and taking it to the other end. So I ask you, as concerned parents, as we move forward, as you see a syllabus, as you have interactions with your teachers, to go to your principals, if you don't think we're challenging the gifted students or if your students just... If you don't think we're challenging the gifted students, or if your students just average, and you don't think we're challenging them enough, we want to know that, and so that we can make those accommodations, because that's what's going to make the difference. So hopefully, we get that feedback and great communication.
I have a comment. I went to a presentation this summer at one of the conferences, and it was One School, One Book, One School. And this principal introduced a book for every student in the school. And by the end of the school year, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, everybody was involved in it. So this is one way that they were trying to help with the reading in this school, and this was instant.
And that is actually what we were referencing. Dr. Thornton brought that information back to us, and that's what we were referencing in the presentation as well.
Right. And Blue Stone Middle started that this summer. They didn't call it One Book, One School, but we are investigating to start that in each elementary school, and hopefully, they each purchase a different book and plan so then we can share and do that through each semester. But yes, that was, that was a great, I would do that session with you. I think that is a great session. So anything like that where we're focused on reading, and I will elaborate, I did have a concerned parent call me at one point and said, I think we're reading too much in the school, and we need to focus more on, on some of the other things of reading. I think if you saw the presentation, there's nothing that can replace reading. We need to read as much as humanly possible. And we do have, in areas of high poverty, we have kids coming to us with huge deficits that maybe know 10 words or less, and they have to be exposed. And that's why Dr. Hackney did reference, we're actually looking through Kristy Peffer's office to develop a birth-through-three-year-old program to help in the community, so to fill those gaps, so we're not getting such a deficit coming in. But read, read, read is so critical, and we're going to spend that time.
Dr. Hackney, you mentioned that central office personnel were going to volunteer their time to help with slow readers in the classroom, which I think is very impressive. But do we have resources of volunteers in the community that could also help with that? You do, or do we need to put out a plea to get more?
A lot of our lunch buddies and, I think the principal told us. I'm not going to turn them down if they go.
Okay, that was my point.
Yeah, so that's a good, yeah, that could do that.
All righty. Thank you, ma'am. Want to have anything else? Anything missed up? Right of you now.
Good evening again. I just wanted to give an update on our security badges and how we are starting to pilot this and test this program. In fact, most of the schools went live the day we got six inches of rain. And so there were some, you know, we had some hiccups, and we're going to have some hiccups. And it's really a retraining of the brain that we're having to do as well. Being, I'm from the South, and most of us are here, that we're really kind people, and so when we see someone knocking on the door, we want to open the door for them. But we really need to train our students, we need to train our staff, we need to train everyone that, we've got some safety issues, we need to follow our safety procedures that we have. So we're trying to, I saw a sign even at Clarksville Elementary that was on the inside, reminding staff and students, don't open the door if you see someone knocking, let the office handle that. So it's really, really going to take us some while, a while, because I'm so used to holding that door open for somebody, that I just got to retrain myself on that. And if I were to, you know, go up to a door and I know I have my card access, what am I supposed to do? So again, let the, the procedure is to let the front desk handle that. We, we had, again, the day that it rained, we had a parent to say that they couldn't get in. And, I mean, it was raining hard last Monday, if y'all recall. And so we need to make sure we have signs up. We've made sure that we have signs that say, you know, press the button for entry. I will even say that at Parkview High and Blue Stone High, probably going to be a concern because there's no awning at the front door there. So when bad weather does come, we may have, we may have some concerns with that. But so far, things are going pretty well. I think the kids are wearing their badges, their ID badges. I have mine on today. I brought some of yours that maybe you haven't picked up yours yet. And don't forget to get your picture ID badge taken if you haven't done that. So I'm going to give these out to you all. Even tonight, we had a new thing. We were like, okay, we're going to have a lot of people coming in the door, and we don't have someone sitting at the receptionist area. So we made a call tonight to what should we do? We should keep the doors unlocked for a period of time, just the side door, because we do have people coming in and out at this time. So those are things that we're just going to have to work through as a group and come to those decisions on how to handle them. Any questions that you may have of our card access?
Yes. Has the public been educated as to how to ring the bell?
Yes, yes. Every school sent, sent information home. They've, they've had information that's going out there. I know we've talked about it with the press ourselves, we've talked about it on the radio. But the schools were to inform the parents about our procedures, and they started informing pretty much at the beginning of the school year, even before we started locking the doors. Most of the schools didn't really go live, like I said, until last Monday.
I do have another question.
Certainly.
If we go, now, I can get into any school.
Right.
If there's an adult or an adult with a child, should I open the door and go ahead, or should I wait until the parent or the adult rings the bell?
Well, again, I would go back to the procedures of the school, and if the procedures of the school, which that's how it is everywhere, is that the office needs to identify who that is coming in and their purpose. I, myself, I have access to all the buildings, too. If I were to walk up and see someone and just open the door, again, that's my southern natural ability to do that, but the procedure is to let the office handle who's coming in the door, so that they know the purpose of the visit and they can, you know, just take a look. That's just one, one line of just a safety issue. This is not, certainly, this is not going to stop everything. As we all know, the Sandy Hook, they had a system like this. They had their doors locked. But it's just one line of defense that we're going to take with this. So for me, what I would say is that the office needs to allow the person in. And we just have to train everybody for that. Any other questions?
I would just like to add, we had a great meeting today with Parkview High School students, and in that discussion came out one of the things that we didn't think about. We were only funded so much through the grant, and so we could choose only so many doors. And what we found out from the students was, what's making them all come in the back door and is overcrowding the hallways, and is causing mass congestion, and kids can't get to their lockers. So we need to investigate, maybe adding a few more doors in the back that students come through when they come from the vocational building.
Absolutely. I've already had that request from both high schools that we need more access points. And, you know, unfortunately, we knew that was probably going to be the case, and that we, you know, hopefully, we can look into those and add, and just continue to work together as a community to keep our children and our staff safe. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. I think you go to the next item also.
I think so. I'm just approaching, we've got some abandoned trailers. So as you all know, when we had our extensions built at our elementary schools, that those trailers were brought over to the bus shop. And we also have some that are empty at Blue Stone Middle School, and we would like to sale or auction these trailers off, as we're not using them at this time. Any questions about those?
Any questions or concerns or anything on that? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Bitter?
Good evening, school board members, chairman, Dr. Thornton. We're just going to continue to go through the process of establishing the V SBA policy. Tonight, we're going to do two sections, or I'm going to present two sections for information only for you to read and approve or vote on next month. Section C is general school administration, and you can look at it and read through it. Make sure you have, you know, if you have any questions between now and next month, email me or call me. These will replace section 2, 3.4, and section 5, 8.3 through 8.4. Section D, we're also going to approve for next month. This is on fiscal management, and you can look at it. It will cover our management funds, annual budget, school activity funds, small purchasing, vendor relations, a lot of different information concerning that. And as far as replacing it, will replace section 3, articles 1 through 4, titled Business Operations in our old policy. Again, please email me, call me if you have any questions. I'll be glad to answer them, and they'll be up for vote for next month. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Thornton?
All righty.
Okay, Ms. Thornton?
We have been approached by Ms. Sharon Crutchfield of Financial Investor, or First Investors Corporation. She is a senior financial services representative there, a local citizen that has asked that we add her to our 403B list. It is of no cost to us. All it does is allow her to sell her products and get payroll deduction through our payroll.
Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Thornton, you want to do field trips?
Next, we have overnight field trips. There's a list in your packet of quite a few field trips that are overnight, from Parkview High School, Parkview Middle School, Blue Stone High School, with the dates. There's only one there with a date to be determined, a trip to Farmville in June or July. We're not sure of those dates, but it will be overnight. And we're just recommending that you approve these overnight field trips.
Any questions in the field trips? All right. Thank you, sir. We're going to subject ill facilities report. Dr. Thornton, I guess you also.
We've been asked quite a bit what an architect will do in this process for a new middle and high school project, and what they will provide. And so in your packet is a suggested process for a preliminary design of a new high school and middle school complex. We've also sent this information to the Board of Supervisors for them to look over. I know there's been a lot of talk about that we could hold these meetings and find out what our citizens want. The problem is, we can probably hold those meetings. We're not experts in facilitating all that's out there and all that's new for our students and for our faculty. And at the end of the day, we still need to take that information to an architect that will tell us the program spaces and the scope of work that's required for what we want. We can't do that work. We're not professional architects. So this kind of outlines, again, what they would do. They would develop a core committee. They suggest developing a building design and programming committee made up of school board members, board of supervisors, PTA, community members, local authorities, business leaders, students, et cetera. So we do want to involve a great cross-section of the community. And then establish meetings, and basically go through the process until we get to what does this community want in a new high school or middle school, and then cost that out and do a cost analysis. They also will provide, I found out, they will provide an operating cost analysis. And again, they won't be able to do this without knowing how big the facility is. Is it going to have an auditorium for 800 seats? How big is the gymnasium going to be? All those large spaces that are, it's hard to know how much it will cost to operate those spaces without knowing how large they are. So they'll be able to provide that. They'll also be able to look at a staffing perspective. If you join the schools together, how does that affect the staffing with administration? Is there, is there some reductions that can happen that will then reduce the operating cost? Because the overall operating cost of mechanical, even though it's more efficient, is going to cost you more to run that school. It's a larger school, because the school is going to be built to SOQ standards of today, 2014, not SOQ standards of 1955, when the existing buildings were built. So, so, but we need, again, professionals to give us that information and that analysis. And they'll also do program presentations after they put together all that information so that we can have that information to make decisions. We do have a meeting coming up, September 26, a joint meeting with the Education Committee, with the Board of Supervisors, and the school board members on that committee. 22nd, oh, what is that? Oh, I'm sorry, 22nd. And, and the committee members have put together a presentation. We're going to have it online, hopefully. Is it online already? Okay, it's online on the website. Where do we find that?
On the main website, 511.
Okay. And it's kind of a narrative of where we've been. It's going to have all the studies that have been done and talk about where we are. And basically, where we are is we do have mechanical issues in our existing schools that were outlined last month through the Honeywell report that was presented to you, and that cost is about $416,000. Those are immediate needs, and two of the biggest immediate needs are in both gyms at the high schools. Those units are, have already been serviced this year. They're already having major trouble. In fact, last year, Heather had an emergency generator backup waiting for graduation at Parkview High School because of the problems. So some of those issues need to be addressed, whether we build new right away or not. And so that's in the report. And also, the need for, I hate to say it again, a study for $200,000 to address what is going to be in this new high school and middle school, so we can actually get some hard costs. Now, we do have the other studies that are in there, and for a consolidated middle and high school, you're looking at 104 million to 130-some million, and that's a pretty wide estimate, because we don't know what's going to be in, in the facility. If they go with a plan where we can only build a consolidated high school in the first step, that was estimated, I believe, at 62 million to 78 million. I'm going off the top of my head from the study. But what's concerning is, and we gave you a report before, if we follow the plan of 30% down and just build a consolidated high school, and say it comes in at 62 million, we have eight years from today to save 30% down. And that's if nothing else happens. Because right now, if anything happens, the Board of Supervisors is taking that money out of the money we're saving for the new high school, which is why we're looking at a performance contract or energy contract instead of spending that money that's put aside for the high school, for the elementary schools. It's like a never-ending problem. So how do we get to the solution? So we're looking at eight years with 30% down, or can we find out how much the school will actually cost? What does the community want? And then get a financial specialist to tell us what are the best avenues? And then get a financial specialist to tell us what are the best avenues to proceed. Interest rates are predicted to go up next year. In the report that was given by security specialists, they said 1 percent. If it goes up 1 percent, we're looking at $7 million in the total project cost. So waiting eight years, we're gonna be losing money. So again, I hope the public looks at these reports. I hope they ask questions, and I hope we get some more dialogue and reports that are shared also from the Board of Supervisors as we move forward.
Anyone have any questions? Or anything? Make sure to look at the reports online and, if there's nothing else. We'll move on to Subject U, Student Liaisons Report. Ms. Mills, please.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton, Chairman, School Board members. I do have a couple things to point out. We now have the student ID cards at Bluestone High School, and a little concern is that not all the students are wearing them. We may need to brainstorm an effective way to implement this, and all in all, we want to be safe. We appreciate the new lunch station that is in our cafeteria, and the lunch lines are moving much faster than the previous years. I hope to network with students to get their views on improving the schools and be a voice for the students. And again, I look forward to working with Mr. Coleman, Dr. Thornton, and the board to improve our schools and enhance our learning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Wilson?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the support that Parkview saw last week after the losing of a dragon, Gianluca Galenio. I believe the School Board sent flowers, and Bluestone sent large posters that we hung up in the school, and that was a lot of support. And going forward, the work that was done this month is, me and Macy are both involved in a V S B A video along the theme of Virginia, We Are One. And I took the route of presenting this project to our CTE Design and Web Media teacher, and she is actually using this as a chance for a project in her class. And the class was divided up into three groups, and they all storyboarded and came up with ideas for a video. And this week, they went into filming, and they are hoping to be done with that and editing next week. So hopefully, we will be submitting three videos in advance time for the October 1st deadline for the conference in November. Me and Dr. Thornton and Dr. Hackney had the great privilege of having a focus group in the high school today. Macy will be doing that Thursday. And some of the ideas were a little superfluous, as you can expect, but it was very impressive. I was impressed. At first, I was a little scared because it started off slow, and not a lot of kids had questions, and I was like, oh, God, oh, God. But then a couple kids asked questions, and it snowballed, and they got ideas from other questions. And one of the most impressive that I saw, that definitely impressed Dr. Hackney and Dr. Thornton, was the students were given the idea of the question, if you wanted no drug testing at all or the drug testing, what would you choose? And unanimously, it was they support the idea of the drug testing. And what was really impressive is that they also said unanimously that they would like to see all students under the program of drug testing and not just the after-school activities. And they also would like to see uniform guidelines on punishment for that because they don't wanna, one of the concerns was sport team members, some might, a star player might get less of a punishment than a third string might. And also, we would like to see going forward the possibility of a focus group of the administration on a regular basis that would streamline letting the administration know issues that the students have, which I believe Ms. Kinley said that she did support wholeheartedly, and preventing the feeling that students might have now of that it may not be their place to go up to their principal and say, this is an issue we have. So this would give them a more direct route to bring forth their ideas and their concerns. And also, we discussed teachers and the skill set that they have that makes them exceptional, and that would be something that could be brought to perhaps other teachers on ideas on how to improve their teaching skills, and that was very helpful. There were a lot of names that were brought out, and we have a lot of great, successful teachers at Parkview, and the students thought so. And many of the great teachers at Parkview, something they saw in common was that the best teachers were ones that went above their job, that loved helping the students not just in class but outside, that took time out of their day to help. And that was one of the most impressive things that I saw. And the future work that I'm excited for, and I'm sure Macy is too, is going to the middle schools and talking with those students and having, hearing their ideas. And I will definitely be using that, the ideas and skills that I gained today on the focus group that we have with the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
I'd like to add, we were very impressed with all of the students at Parkview High School today. We had students in 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade in the focus group. And probably what was the most impressive is they came with concerns or some situations to improve their schools, but they also came with solutions. So it wasn't coming and saying, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong, it was, here's some issues, and here's how we might be able to fix these issues. What do you think? And some great suggestions, and some things that we were already working on, which they didn't even know about, like the student parking lot issues over there. But it was good for them to hear too that, yeah, we are working on that. So just opening these lines of communications directly with the students, and I think Charles said it, there was a little worry about coming forward and telling their principal or telling their teacher how something could be different. But we tried to reinforce that we wanna have a student-centered school division and that the school is for them. So please give us your suggestions, and your principals or your teachers. They'll explain why certain things are done, and some things won't change because they have to be done for certain reasons. But some things will change, and it was a great meeting. I really enjoyed myself.
I'd like to stress was that this was truly a focus group. We specifically went out of our way not to just select students at random because we were afraid we might accidentally pull two names of people in the same clique or friendship that might have the same opinions. We specifically went out and decided to get students that have, that you would expect to have very different opinions and avenues on how they would take issues. And it was also very impressive that most of the students there came together on a lot of the issues, and even though they were very varied in their walks of life, they agreed on a lot of the things that we talked about, and I thought that was impressive.
Can I add on for like one second? I'm very excited for Dr. Thornton to come this week, too, and we're gonna do the same thing with the focus groups, and hopefully, we're gonna have problems that are gonna come up and then solutions that you all did today. So hopefully, that'll work, too. Thank you.
Thank you all. This time, we come to our Public Input Session. At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the Board and Administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the Board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. The clerk of the School Board will write down your name, address, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, and it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, be defamatory, or disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the board.
Wanda Bailey, on capital improvement. Good evening. My name is Wanda Bailey. In light of tonight's presentation by Johnson Controls and Dr. Blevins, I think it's time to really consider a change in our approach to what we need in this county. And I'd like to present to you a simple, bold, fresh, paid-for plan to upgrade, maintain, and enhance our middle and high schools. Supervisors have already approved and are giving us $2 million a year that we are now putting in the bank. Let's spend it for as long as it takes every year to fix our current county assets that we own and that we use. You've already compiled a list of items that need to be taken care of because your committee requested that of you. You've even given some thought to your prioritization, as Dr. Thornton mentioned earlier, in terms of the AC for the gyms. What are we waiting for? Let's get it done. I and others are looking for leadership that is not looking for another dollar, but instead trying to find creative, practical ways to solve the physical plant issues that we have. Our biggest threat right now is not buildings. Our biggest threat looms next fall when the Department of Education releases test scores for this year. Our future economically depends on a qualified, educated workforce and a fully accredited school system, which will draw future manufacturing and business partners. We do not need new buildings to do that. What we need is dedicated teachers, supportive administrators, involved parents, and students whose desire is to succeed and to make us all proud. Just ask the superintendent from Wise County who recently gave us a plan, well, shared with us their building plans in Wise County, and he, this is a quote from him, and I really, speaking directly to me, that he could teach children in a tent. It wasn't the buildings that he was pointing to for their success. Just ask educators who are in pristine buildings that are accredited with warning, like our own South Hill Elementary. This is the crisis we face. Yes, our buildings need work. We have a board of supervisors who are now funding these. Maybe they're a decade, maybe a couple decades younger than ours, but there's nothing special going on there. The difference there is that people like Dr. Blevins and Johnson Controls are going in there on a regular basis, updating and upgrading facilities. I've gotten off my notes, so I'm gonna try to get back there. The additions we just completed at our elementary schools prove how these projects can make a difference on these campuses. And we could do the same thing at our middle schools, just, I've just been brainstorming inside my little head. A two-story addition, which you can do at a middle school, you can go up at a middle school, you can't do that on the elementary school level, a two-story or three-story addition even, to connect to the main building in the front with classrooms and a media center. We could connect those buildings with breezeways, we could brick walls. I went to Hopewell High School a few weeks ago. That school was built in 1960s. You can walk in the front door of Hopewell High School and walk to the very back of the campus without ever going outside, and it was not built that way initially. I'm sure that those buildings were connected over time.
You got one minute, Ms. Bitter?
You could extend cafeteria space. I have so many ideas when I walk in our schools as how we could make them better. Things that we can do now to preserve the buildings that we have now. We cannot afford to scrap any more assets in this county. We must salvage and preserve and maintain what we have, and we must focus on the main thing, a fully accredited school system where every child, no matter his skin color or her economic background, can pass his or her SOLs. Two mil a year. Surely, we can accomplish something with two mil a year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Shutterworth, anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna move on to our action agenda. Have a motion, School Board approves the meetings, the regular School Board meeting held on August 18th, 2014. We have a motion, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? I abstain, Ms. Shutterworth, I was a present. And Ms. Waxstaff wasn't present. Move on to Subject B, Payment of the Bills. Have a motion, School Board approves the payment of the bills. Have a motion. Do we have a second? Is there any discussion?
All right, I reviewed the bills on last Thursday, and I just had a couple of questions. Administration, page five, $43,501.77. I'm bottom of the page, right?
I'll find it. Here's it, too. In Administration. All right, I'm there. And if you could tell me again which one you're looking at?
It was the total of $43,000. I guess it's Norfolk Public Schools and also the in-touch therapy and so forth.
Yes, sir. The Norfolk Public Schools is education cost for a student that we have housed, I believe, at the hospital in Norfolk, that we have to pay them for educating the student. In-touch therapy, all of that is related through the sped department. Christie Pepper would be able to give us more details if we need that.
And the operation and maintenance category, page one, gravel hill septic tanks, Parkview Miller, and Parkview High.
Yes, sir. That's, we had the septic tanks cleaned at all of the schools that required it this summer.
And I believe that's all. Thank you.
I had a question. We, I saw two bills in there to service solutions.
Yes, ma'am. We had a little bit of mix-up with invoicing with them at the beginning of the year. We had been paying service solutions ahead. In my opinion, I held back a bill, and between the invoicing errors and the illness of my head AP clerk for two weeks, we ended up in the same month. They were not in the same bill run, and I did relook at the invoices today. We have paid July and August. So both payments were for services that we have already received.
Anyone have any more questions or concerns on the bills? Here none? All those in favor? None opposed, Ms. Shutterworth? We'll move on to Personnel. Have a motion, School Board approves the Personnel recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor? None opposed, Ms. Shutterworth? Move on to Subject D, V S B A Policy, Section B. Have a motion, School Board approves adoption of V S B A Policy, Section B, School Board Governance and Operations.
Some of.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here none. All those in favor? None opposed? Subject E, 21st Century Grant at the schools. Have a motion, school board approves the 21st Century Grant at the schools. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, Ms. Shutterworth? Subject F, sale of our mobile units. Have a motion, school board approves the sale of the mobile units.
Some of.
Second.
It's no longer a policy.
It's no longer a policy. That's V S, thank the Lord for V S B A.
Okay, so it's taken out. We don't have to worry about that anymore.
We don't have to worry about it anymore. If you'd like to go through the ritual, we will, but...
Well, I'd just like to hear you say it.
Sometimes, sometimes I like to say it too. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Garner.
It's going to be an option.
But they'll be sold from where they are and in the condition that they are, and they have to move.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Wait a minute, somebody's time's up. Hold on just a second. Really not sure what I did. Okey-dokey. I guess I thought you kept saying slide to stop doesn't mean anything, does it? Anyway. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All opposed, none opposed? When are we, when are we going to try to have this? I mean, I know we've got to advertise it and everything, but... I feel like we need to do it quick as, do the all the paperwork. Yeah. We need to do it quick as we can, anyway, regardless. Thank you, ma'am. Have a motion, school board approves adding First and Veterans Corporation slash Sharon Crutchfield as a qualified 403B voluntary deduction vendor.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? None opposed, Ms. Shutterworth? Take care of our action items. Got a note here about going over the bills. Ms. Garner and I have created a May 2014, 15 listing of the dates of school board meetings and dates to go over the bills. And school board members that we hope will take their turn in going over the bills during that time, please see the attachment that I have at everybody's seat. We will keep this document onboard, docs, so you can access it throughout the year. If you have any questions or none of these, none of these dates suit, please let Ms. Garner or Ms. Shutterworth know, please. For bill questions and anything on policies and personnel, if you would let Ms. Pitter know. So on that part, on that. And we had a, I have something here I want to go over real quick. This is regarding board member remarks. I did put board member remarks back on the agenda. After attending conferences and training on how to be a good board member and hoping to be the best board member I could possibly be, and being told that having board member remarks on the agenda is not a good practice, realizing also that all board members have the opportunity throughout the meeting to address board issues and plenty of time to add any discussion items. I would defer from my better judgment in training the real estate board member remarks with time limit to three minutes per board member. And ask that each board member keep that time limit in mind. It is not seen as necessary to add board in three minutes, since members can speak on any agenda items throughout the meeting. I hope that all the board members will see the wisdom in compromising and communicating effectively. While we don't always agree with each other, we can hopefully show each other respect and let the citizens of Mclemmore County see that we are able to work together in a professional and business-like manner. Also wanting to thank all, all board members who weighed in on this issue and let you know that I've also taken your remarks into consideration and have thought long and hard on this. Let us all work together for the greater good, greater good of our students and their education. Let's put our children first. We're going to move on to board member remarks. We're going to start with Mr. Wilson. We're going to come around and end with Ms. Mills.
I think I covered my board member remarks in my report under Dr. Thornton's.
Ms. Garner?
Yes. I would like to say I enjoyed the program at South Hill Elementary Thursday. The kids were wonderful, even though they were kindergarten, they were well behaved. And I would also like to thank Carboy Furniture, because they were instrumental in getting the chairs to the middle school and to the elementary school, from what I understand.
And discount furniture.
Oh, discount furniture. I didn't know for them.
Ms. Tanner?
I just want to thank the staff and the administration and everyone for all the hard work that they did this summer to get ready for this year. I know that there was a lot of, of things that they had to do, even in their off time, and I appreciate that. I was glad to see the gains that we have and that we've had in the SOLs this year. And also to see the steps that we're putting in place, that you've been working on through the summer to put in place for this year. And there's no doubt in my mind that we will have gains again. I believe in what this administration is doing. I believe in what the staff is doing. And I believe in all of our teachers. I know that they are going to, to do everything that they can to make this a successful year. And I want to say that this is the first year since I've been on the school board that has been the smoothest start, the least amount of phone calls from parents with issues or problems that came up and things like that. So this, it was a great start to this year, and I thank you all for that.
Mr. Wolf?
I haven't found it tonight.
Yes, sir. Ms. X?
I'd like to tell everyone I enjoyed the meeting tonight immensely. And I like for the administration and the teachers and everyone involved. Everything I've heard and it seemed thus far, you seem to be on the road for a very productive year. If there's anything I can do, yes, let me know. But there's a whole lot of generation gap between. And I get my, my hats off to all of you, because things are different and it's good.
Do you need a substitute math teacher?
Ms. Smiley?
I just want to thank the teachers, administrators, and staff for all of their hard work in teaching our students, but more importantly, what was presented tonight in a comprehensive strategic plan to get us on the right track and help our students improve their scores. Thank you.
Ms. Waxstaff?
Likewise, I was excited to, I read this first thing this morning too. I'm glad you quoted from this, because that's what I've been trying to just get, to get across to people. Our children aren't learning less. They aren't being, they're actually learning more, because we're getting rid of the, the SOLs that just taught them to memorize and just recite and do multiple choice. We're actually teaching them to think and, and communicate and collaborate. And that's what these new SOLs, so they're actually, the scores are not showing up, but they're learning more, because it's, it's increased rigor. And I would like everyone also just to remember, we've, we've been studying our facilities. We've had professionals. We've had, we've had our facilities analyzed to death. We have to move forward. And we've got to make the right decisions that'll help the taxpayers in the long run. We can nickel and dime and nickel and dime here, but this, we're talking millions of dollars that it could cost us to move forward if we don't move. So everybody read the studies and, and keep, keep informed. Thank you.
Ms. Mills?
I would like to say thank you all for this plaque right here and being the senior in the month, because it really does mean a lot to me. And I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there is one other thing. The date for the IC.
We'll get that in just a second. We're going to get that in just a second.
I, I would just like to add about the construction as well. I've been through construction projects at, at other school divisions. I've gone through renovations. I've gone through new construction. The college and university, I'm very familiar with that, with my wife's job in higher education. And the work that goes on in higher ed, absolutely, they're constantly doing it. If you've ever been on site and actually are involved in any of that, they totally gut the building. If you walk in during the construction of that or renovation of that, all the infrastructure is torn out. All you see is the existing bricks and, and walls. All the subsystem and flooring is ripped out of those buildings completely. And those buildings are not utilized for a time period, and the colleges may do and shift students. Part of our report online, if you look for the one that was presented in 2010, actually gave prices for doing that to our existing buildings. So to totally gut them, those prices are in the report, and they were like $43 million versus the, the 50-some million dollars or $60 million. So yes, there can be a savings in renovating, but it still is a tremendous process, and the students will not be in those buildings during that time. And I think Ms. Tuck, in her short, short time, can attest to some of the problems that have come up in, in last year, where, where South Hill helped us tremendously. Some of the people who worked for the city of South Hill came in and helped us with some sewage issues. That was backed up in, in some of the, the facilities. That was actually backed up in coming through our cinder block walls and, and into our facility. We have major substructure issues underneath buildings that were built in 1955. We have constantly replaced these lines. At, at some point, something needs to be done, whether it is brand-new construction or the renovation, which I'm talking about. But that renovation is more than adding a few additions here and there. It, it's major money. And that's what's happening at those universities. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, before we get on with our, setting our date, and Ms. Garner, a volunteer over here. I'd like to thank the, the Kansas Sheriff's Department for the five cars they gave to our transportation department. We sure appreciate it. I don't want to see Mr. Hawkins or anyone here tonight, but let them know we sure do appreciate it. So, Ms. Garner, what day you want to get with? All right. Who else is on board? You're doing it? Okay. What do y'all want to try to do it at? One of the, I think the central office?
Oh, yeah. We need to do it here.
Let's see. Effets, what dates you have available, Ms. Tanner? How long does it take to do it? Five minutes? I feel like I'm going to go to jail for not even having double wise word on us, will we? What, what dates you got available, Miss Bullock? You want to do it tonight? Who else is going to join us? What dates you're available? I'm going to say, I'm kind of flexible, but not a whole lot flexible. I know, I know Ms., Ms. Tanner's schedule is right tight. How about the 17th?
We only need a representative. Just you and Ms. Garner do it.
I almost thought I just said Garner was going to do it.
I can do it Friday morning at 10 o'clock, or I can do it Friday afternoon.
Who else can, who else can do it Friday morning, 10 o'clock? Ms. Smiley? We'll shoot.
We want documentation.
I can confirm, because I'm doing it two days before.
Why don't you do it Friday at 10 o'clock?
All right. Friday, 10 o'clock then. Friday, 10 o'clock. I think it's supposed to make that one. We will be at the central office. So thank you all for attending. And I'm going to give it to Ms. Shutterworth to put towards it. And, um...
That's what we did, if you'd like to add to that.
Yeah. Have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?